Cindy.
I'm over here. No, Mr. Michael's gonna be here too?
I thought so.
Five thirty-five. Item number two, Budget Workshop. Presentation of FY two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Revenue Estimates and Preliminary Budget. Mr. Tony Redd.
Yes, sir. President Gandara, Dr. Spinosa, members of the board. Today we'll continue our budget process with respect to the two thousand seventeen, eighteen fiscal year budgets for the General Fund, the Debt Service, as well as for Child Nutrition Program. And we'll also include our budget proposal with respect to compensation for next school year. So just briefly want to go over the agenda. Just give you a slight, quick update with respect to any legislative action, as well as some federal information on federal legislation. Kind of give you an update on our revenue estimates, as they have changed the last time we talked. And then we'll go over the General Fund, Child Nutrition, and the Debt Service. And then we'll discuss the compensation proposal that we're recommending for next school year. And then we'll discuss the June sixth Budget Workshop. So with respect to legislation, right now, we're still waiting and seeing what's going to happen with respect to the state legislature. As you know, House Bill twenty-one, which provides an additional one point eight billion dollars in revenue to schools, is being discussed along with the Senate proposal. So the Senate Subcommittee, along with the House Subcommittee, are discussing. And it's a wait-and-see at this point to see what comes out of that. Now, with respect to federal legislation, the new American Healthcare Act that was adopted by the House recently might have a negative impact with respect to school funding on our SARS program. This act has deep cuts on the Medicaid program. So they're reducing about eight hundred eighty million dollars, or twenty-five percent, now over a ten-year period. And that's because of the fact that school districts receive Medicaid funding through our SARS program. And what you'll see in our revenues, there is a recommended increase in the budget because we're receiving additional money in that particular area. So it's important to keep that in mind for the future. It might not be an immediate impact, number one. Number two, it still has to go to the Senate. So it still remains to be seen if the act in its entirety is going to be approved, so to speak. Now, with respect to our revised revenue assumptions and estimates for the General Fund, we have made some changes. First of all, we received our preliminary, or I should say preliminary values for next school year. Based on that, I'm projecting our values would end up being eight point nine billion dollars, which is a four point one zero percent increase from the current year. The last couple of months, I've been presenting a four percent increase. So there's a little bit of a hundred thousand dollar increase in tax collections. We've adjusted our TRS on behalf revenues based on our budget. We've looked at our ADA for our special populations for the fifth, six weeks. And based on that, I've tweaked those FTEs, which provide some additional revenue for the district. I've also increased the collection percentage for tax collections. Historically, I've always used ninety-eight percent. I did a review for the last five years. We've always collected more than what we budgeted. So I felt it was important to tweak it and have a new percentage of ninety-nine percent, and that generate additional revenue. So based on these factors, our revenues for the General Fund have increased our revenue estimates by one point, almost one point nine million dollars in additional revenue. Again, as I mentioned when we first started, revenue estimates change as we get more up-to-date information, as we review our student counts. And also to see if perhaps we're being a little bit too conservative with our revenue assumptions. Now, we've also made some changes in our budget that we presented since April the twenty-fifth. We've gone ahead and included a computer lease for the one-on-one initiative. So that's reduced our budget accordingly. And that allowed us to do, to allow us to make the recommendation that we're going to recommend with respect to compensation. We've added several new positions in the budget due to the EEB regulation. And then we've adjusted our on-behalf TRS based on growth. So what you have here is the line items for the General Fund with respect to revenues. Again, I mentioned it was about a one point nine million dollar increase since April twenty-fifth budget meeting. Primarily increases would be in, I'm sorry.
Meeting over.
Yeah, exactly.
Questions?
I've heard people mumbling, but this is a video mumbling.
Well, I'm sure the members of the audience are like, alright. So right here, you have an increase here. I made a reduction here based on historical data. Certainly, there's an increase here. And there was an increase on TRS on behalf, which is this number right here. So you're seeing, we had three hundred and sixty million before, we have three hundred and sixty-two million in additional revenue. Again, I mentioned, revenue estimates change based on up-to-date information. This is our budget proposal. It's very close to what was presented last time. Last time, we were at three hundred and seventy-one point six million. Right now, at three hundred and seventy-one point seven million dollars. And what you'll see is certainly increases in instruction, increases in school and school leadership, increases in transportation, in maintenance, in security. With respect to Debt Service, where that's part of the lease that we're talking about for the computers. So it's a three point four five percent increase in the budget compared to our revised budget. With respect to Child Nutrition, you're seeing, you'll be seeing a slight increase with respect to, this is the revenues. It's pretty much staying the same as before. And then on Child Nutrition, there would be increases certainly in payroll. Because we're presenting an increase over what we had projected last time. I'm going to go quickly over that, and you can always ask me questions at the end. With respect to Debt Service, because of the ninety-nine percent tax collections and the slight increase in values, there's an increase in this amount, current tax collections. I've gone ahead and adjusted this to be a little bit more conservative. And so we have a balanced budget. What I want to keep and remind the board is that we've been pretty aggressive in refunding and refinancing bonds because of the falling interest rates. And because of that, this will allow us to reduce our debt solvers over prior years. So what you're looking at is in future years, or maybe this current year, as values go up, we can maybe move over a slight amount of the INS tax rate over to M and L if we need to. So this is our proposed. This is the budget that will be adopted by the board. As we mentioned, it's adopted by fund, it's adopted by function. Total is four hundred and forty-five point seven million dollars. And so that's the way we're going to present it to you in June for your adoption, okay? Any changes made for compensation will reflect a change here. And then as we always do in the May Budget Workshop, we present capital outlay expenditure. This is for all funds. And what you'll see is that the revised budget is larger. Usually, we have contracts that have been approved from the prior year that we will roll over. Or there might be some committed funds amounts that are in here. That's why the number that's being proposed for this new fiscal year is lower. Now, what we have here is a scenario with respect to what our healthcare plan is and what we contribute. Because when we talk about compensation, we also have to include the healthcare that's being contributed on behalf of the employees by the district. You can't talk about one without talking about the others. Some people might choose to, but the bottom line is this, there's only so much money in revenue. And you either give it for compensation or supplies, or you give it for healthcare. Now, Socorro, Isleta, Granotio are self-funded. When you talk about Alpasso and Clint, they're part of the state plan, TRS Active Care. So when you look at how much we put in per employee, you can see how we're so much more higher than the other school districts. And I want to remind the board that we've committed to increase this amount to five hundred and seventy-five dollars, or twenty-five dollars per employee per month. It's about one point six billion dollar impact to the budget. It kind of equates to like a half a percent increase in salaries. So we choose to do that. And when we look at compensation, it's important to keep in mind is, now, this is going to change. Next month, it's going to be a twenty dollar increase across the board. Now, this board, we recommended a change to the plan. And our board said, we want to be able to make sure that we implement these changes over a three-year period. And we're committed to that. And this board also said, these changes aren't automatic. Every year, we want you to come back and present to us your recommended changes. And then, and only then, will we adopt or say yes or no. And in that presentation that we did, that we talked about several years, several months ago, we committed to providing and putting at least an additional two million dollars every year for the next four years, starting this year, with respect to healthcare, to be able to perhaps lessen the burden and to be able to ensure that our healthcare fund is fully funded. So it's important to keep that in mind. Now, we talked, we had in our budget on the April twenty-fifth budget, we had one point five percent compensation increase, okay? And we presented to you a possible scenario of a two percent increase. So we've adjusted the budget and included in our budget that you currently have, a two percent pay increase for our employees. For teachers, you're looking at a two percent inclusive of the step. So that is a one thousand five hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand fifty-eight dollar increase paid off the teacher pay scale. Now, this amount will range from a thousand fifty-eight to a thousand two hundred and seventy-eight based on the number of days of that teacher's contract, okay? So our starting salary that we're proposing, should the board approve it next week, would be a starting salary of forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five for bachelors, fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars for masters, and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five for a doctor. For counselors, and the proposed pay scale would be that amount plus a four dollar counselor differential. So you're looking at basically an increase, an entry-ly pay level of fifty-one thousand, thirteen dollars for a counselor pay scale. We're also recommending, in our budget, and it's in our budget, a two percent midpoint increase respective pay scale for paraprofessionals, auxiliaries, technologies, and administrative employees. We feel this is a commensurate increase. It allows us to keep up with respect to other school districts. It allows us to also ensure that we have a healthy fund balance in the healthcare, not necessarily just the General Fund. Now, I wanted to state that Mr. Trustee Guerra did call and ask for some information. He did ask, what would the cost be or the impact on the budget be if, instead of giving a two percent, we give a three percent across the board pay increase? And what you have there is the amount that would be. You're looking at an additional two point four million dollar impact to the budget. Because we have the budget for all salaries, okay? He also said, what would be the impact if we provided every qualified employee a five hundred dollar end-of-year stipend or bonus for Christmas? And so Mr. Campoya provided the information at two point seven million dollars as an impact into the district's budget, or certainly towards fund balance. He also asked, what would be the cost associated with increasing the minimum wage? I wasn't sure if it was eight dollars, or if it was higher than that. So I'm going to ask Mr. Campoya if he can come up here and maybe talk about that, if it's okay at this point in time. Mr. Campoya.
Thank you, Mr. Redd. Good evening, President Gandara, Board Members, Dr. Spinosa. So the, what I pulled was the amount increasing employees that are earning minimum wage to eight dollars and seventy cents. That was one of the proposals that was submitted by the association. Increasing everybody that is at the minimum wage of seven twenty-five by twenty percent. It brings it to eight dollars and seventy cents an hour. So with that respect, if we were to increase all those employees, there is a total of three hundred and forty-three employees that are affected. We have thirty-one college student workers earning seven and a quarter. We have thirteen co-op coaches, eighty-two high school student workers, one hundred and ninety-five temporary crossing guards, twenty-two temporary monitors. Now, on the crossing guards, some of them are doing both, crossing and monitoring. So for the total, the difference would be four hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. If we were to increase all those to eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Right now, and again, that's just an average because they work from fifteen hours a week up to twenty-five hours a week. So it depends on the employee. But looking at an employee that is working twenty-five hours a week, currently, they are making approximately six thousand, five hundred annually, because it is a part-time position. That means that they would go to seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty annually with that proposal.
Let me just go over something pretty quick before I go to the last slide. And so with respect to the General Fund, so when we're looking at this General Fund, our revenues are about three hundred and sixty-two million dollars. So right now, we're looking at using fund balance of nine point seven million dollars. Well, let me rephrase that. That's currently how we stand with respect to the budget. And then you're looking at, for the Child Nutrition, about one point seven million dollars use of fund balance to balance the budget. Now, we know that there is discussion at the legislature of possibly providing additional revenue, funding for school districts. House Bill twenty-one, we feel through the runs, would generate, if it's approved in its entirety, would generate an additional six million dollars for this district. So that deficit would go from about nine point seven to about three point seven. Now, if nothing happens at the legislature, if they're going to have a special session, then we have to publish the proposed tax rate in that first week in June, before we meet, to discuss it. Three cents tax increase would balance the budget. So that would be about a fifty-eight dollar tax impact to the average homeowner in Socorro ISD. Now, you don't have to approve it. You have to publish the maximum amount, and then when you approve the tax rate in August, you can go lower, or you can say, no, we're not going to increase it. But if nothing happens at the legislature, our plan is to publish that. If we do get additional revenue from the legislature, and the legislature will close at the end of this month, so it'll be after the regular board meeting in May, but before we meet again. If, if we do get something with respect to funding, additional five or six million dollars, then our recommendation is that we don't publish a tax increase. That we use fund balance to balance the budget. Now, we can also, if we're not going to increase the tax rate, shift, and we would recommend shifting a point four of a penny from the Debt Service, because our Debt Service is going down over to the Maintenance and Operations side. And that would generate a little bit more revenue to reduce that deficit. So I just want to be clear about that at this point in time. So before we get to this last slide, are there any questions with this presentation? So in that budget you have, you have a two percent general pay increase for everybody. We also have an increase in our healthcare contribution that comes out to about one point five million dollars, as well as some additional positions needed for growth. So. Are there any questions?
Mr. Redd.
You've added positions on the budget for the coming year. How many positions have we added?
So we're going to add about certainly forty-four with respect to the bilingual program. And I think there's an additional, hold on just a minute, I'll get right with you. So twenty-seven for transportation, five for maintenance and operations, four for technology, three for police services, two for finance, one for administrative services, one for academic services, and one for human resources. So you're looking about thirty-two, thirty-six, thirty-nine, forty-one, forty-two, forty-four, forty-four.
Ninety-three total?
Total.
Total including the forty-three specifically.
So, and again, that's because we're growing. It's a, I mean, we've been growing the last two years significantly. And so we've kind of held off on additional positions, particularly this current, this current year, we held off on some additional positions. But it's important for us to keep moving forward because employees can only work overtime so much, they get tired.
So with these positions, will that bring us at least to a better, obviously, it'll bring us to a better point where we are. You know, one of the things that we've been applauded for is the fact that our growth, we've always maintained our growth of staffing proportional to the growth of revenue and proportional to the growth of students. Is this going to get us close to that, or are we still going to be missing people?
I believe it's going to get us close to that, to their levels, sir. There'll always be requests, but those are things that we review on a yearly basis. And I think it's important for us to make sure that we provide some relief.
On page seven of your presentation, under Child Nutrition Fund two forty,
Yes.
I was kind of wondering, I do see the column at the right where the difference is. But can you explain why we have that difference? Obviously, we are feeding more children. I kind of hope the revenue would be a little bit, proposed a little bit higher for next year than it is. It's what, one point, one million dollars?
Yes, sir. And so, I mean, I mean, the bottom line is that we're looking at historically how much we've collected last couple of, last couple of years. So with respect to the lunch program, that six point seven percent increase is commensurate to what we've collected. And we've been pretty judicious in being, not overestimating revenues. And I do, and you know, I mean, it's important to keep that in mind, and so.
So I kind of would like to reconcile that with page eight, because there, our expenses actually go down.
Yes, sir.
While our revenue goes up a little bit. So one kind of implies to me more providing of more meals, the other one, maybe buying cheaper food.
Well, no, no, sir. And when you look at that, it's because of the fact that we have certainly a significant amount in capital outlay because we're doing that construction on those cafeterias.
Okay.
And part of that is also to kind of draw down the fund balance. By, by federal regulations, we're not allowed to have more than three months of operating expenses in child nutrition. And so what they will allow you to do is do some capital enhancements, and we're doing that this summer. So that's why you'll see more on the capital side. I can assure you that certainly Ms. Shunovsky, Mr. Iyantin have worked hard with respect to the quality of the food that we provide to our children.
Now, have we added any, you mentioned the cost for child nutrition, did we add more positions there? I know we had a plan at one point to try to convert some temporary positions to full-time employee positions. Are we proposing adding any positions there?
At this point in time, there's no increase of that. Now, we will do it next year when we fully staff the new elementary school for eighteen nineteen.
On your capital outlay on page eleven.
Yes, sir.
I understand, I realize that's the budget, and those are, those are the numbers of things that we intend to purchase for the coming year. How many of those items, you may not know right now, are not out of our General Fund? Are some of those things grant-funded or partially grant-funded?
Yes, sir. I can, I can tell you for certainly like the nine seventy child nutrition, that's out of two forty. So that's certainly out of the child nutrition program. District operations, nine forty, I would venture to guess that some of that is committed funds. Because we've asked the board to use some of our unassigned fund balance for major committed projects, whether they be certainly some work in the Aquatic Center. Some of that might be things that we approved for Socorro High School. We have a major HVAC program that's going on. That wasn't committed, that's in the General Fund, but it's there. So I would say, I can try to give you that information. Now, transportation, that's buses that we've ordered. We've ordered about eight, ten buses and so forth. So we're hoping to get them in July. So we're going to roll over the budget, and we should get them in July ready for the new school year.
I thought we were proposing fifteen bus drivers too? Are they already in here?
Yes, sir.
Did you say that, and I missed?
Yes, sir. And what we've done is because of the need, we've gone ahead and the cabinet has approved with Dr. Spinosa's approval to hire some, not all of them, but some of those drivers and some of those mechanics. Now, instead of waiting till the beginning of the school year, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, please go ahead, sorry. I have some questions on the other pages, like pages twenty-one and so forth.
Certainly.
Do you want to address that now or later?
No, let's address them.
No, well, hang on, hang on. Mr. President Gandara? Mr. Redd, can you tell me again, when we're looking at the, you mentioned the two percent. Who was the difference between the two and a half and three, what was that again? I missed that.
The, the difference between the one and a half percent and the two is about one point three million dollars, if I'm not mistaken. Now, what you have there is a slide, we gave you a sheet showing the one and a half percent, the two percent, and the three percent. It's not listed here, I think we gave you.
Paper copy.
Paper copy. But I mean, you're looking at about a, about a one point two million dollar impact to the budget for all funds. But what you'll see is that what we've done is that in this area, we went, we were budgeting for purchasing of laptops. And so what we're going to do is we're going to do a lease purchase on the laptops that allowed us to reduce the budget and increase the leasing here, Debt Service, by seven hundred thousand dollars. And that allowed us to be able to, I guess, encapsulate and be able to fit a pay increase from one and a half to two percent. And so that's why there's not much of an increase here from the April twenty-fifth budget that we presented. So let's see if I can, if you look probably at your budget book. Let me see if I can kind of get that. Let me see if I can give you this. And the audience won't be able to see this unless, well, you have the, some of you have the April twenty-fifth budget. Yeah, if you want to pass them on, so to speak. So what we did is that in this area, we had about two million dollars budgeted for the purchase of laptops. We reduced that amount, and we increased by seven hundred thousand dollars our Debt Service, so we could do a lease purchase starting next year. And that difference was what allowed us to be able to increase salaries from one and a half percent to two percent. And this minimized the increase in the budget, so that we could keep the current deficit to less than about ten million dollars. And so what I can do is I can kind of show you the increase that was, or the line item that was listed on the prior budget book.
Well, I guess when I was getting it with the decrease there, I was looking at the salary increase from the two percent that you're recommending from the two and a half to three percent. What would be the difference percentage-wise with this decrease here?
So when you look at the increase from two and a half percent, or you're saying from two percent?
Well, from two to two and a half and then three.
So when you look at two and a half percent, you're talking about another one point two million dollars in addition to what we have currently, if we want to go from two to two and a half percent in the budget. Now, that is for all funds, okay? Usually about, so you're looking at maybe about an additional million dollars because some of this would be, some of those increases would go to like Title One and Idea B and so forth. And then going from one and a half, two and, two percent to three, I'm sorry, from two and a half percent to three percent, you're looking at about another one point three million dollars in additional funding.
Mr. Redd, so looking at those lines up there, is function number eleven, straight salaries, nothing else?
No, sir. That's all funds. That's everything. That's salaries, that's computers, that's.
So we can't just look at that line right there and assume that the difference proposed versus revised is straight salaries, right? I mean, because to me, it's pretty simple. If I'm looking at two hundred and ten million dollars, let's just say that was salary. If I'm looking at two ten million, and we want to give a one percent, that's two point one. If it's two, it's two times the one. And if it's three, it's three times. So the math is really simplified that way. But we can't do it up there, we can do it though.
What we can do is certainly by.
What we've seen here. But I do have a question. The step happens whether we propose an increase or not, right?
Well, usually what we'll do is, that's true, that's correct. Because of the pay scale, the way it's done.
If we do zero percent, they still get the increase. If we do a one percent, then we should back out the step because the step is done whether we give an increase or not. So the overall, and if we go to two percent, it's not two times the step, it's two times the difference between the one percent minus the step, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because we're always do the, they increase inclusive of the step that's listed.
Right, okay.
So what we have there is that two percent, but anyway, go ahead.
No, I, my questions probably didn't make sense to anybody, but they made sense to me.
What we can do is certainly for the, the board meeting on Tuesday, I mean, we can provide that additional information that you want. And maybe kind of show you what was in the April twenty-fifth budget, as well as what's now in the current budget. And so kind of show you where the differences are. And then perhaps show you what the budget, total budget would be if you want to go to three percent. We don't recommend it. We're recommending two percent. We think it's commensurate with other districts. We think it's a healthy increase. It allows us to continue moving forward. We're very hopeful that the legislature comes through and provides additional funding for the school district. If they do, and if it's commensurate, like five million or more, then perhaps we can continue providing these services without doing an increase in the tax rate. And perhaps we can move forward and have that for one more year, because when people move into the district, they look at two things. The schools, and our schools are second to none, so we've got that down. They also look at the tax rate. Now, we can't control what other taxing entities do. But the largest part of the tax bill is the school district's tax rate. And if we can continue, we feel it spurs investment, and it feels more people coming to the school district.
Any more questions?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Still have several.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Ressa, can you go back to the slide where we were talking about, God forbid, the possibility of the SHARs going away? And I'm seeing it on the revenue estimates on, on slide five, on page five in our, in our book. Um.
Yes, ma'am. It's, you'll see a major increase that we're budgeting because, um, for two years in a row, look, this is what, I'm sorry, uh, this, this is what we budgeted last two years. And last, two thousand sixteen and this year, we're getting one point six million dollars more. And so we're budgeting accordingly. And the reason I listed that was because this, this amount could go down. I don't wanna be an alarmist. I want the board to know that. But until we get further direction and further information, this line item might start going down. And so it was important to kiss, to let you know.
And, and I know, um, just because of the field that I'm in, I know some of that is already starting to affect outside agencies and what is, what are billable expenses. Um, and I guess until we find out more information, but if we take a hit there, that's gonna be a major budget impact.
Yes, ma'am. It will be.
Because all the SHARs goes into the general fund, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Now, by the same token, it also allows us to be able to add additional sped personnel. And we have increased our sped personnel significantly in the last couple of years. Now, and the reason we're doing this is because we wanna budget more closely with respect to our revenue estimates and maybe lessen the difference between what we budget on revenues and what we actually earn at the end of the school year. So, um, but there's also some additional documents that we have here. I don't have here, but it's in your booklet. And so, well, we're trying to provide you more detailed information about the different funds that we're gonna approve, so to speak.
So, Mr. Gander, can I move forward?
Straight.
On page twenty-one, um, fifty-seven, fifty-three, extracurricular activities, um, more schools, more extracurricular activities, more events. Um, why is there a twenty-two percent decrease there? Are, do we have less things happening?
So with respect to this, the fact that we, when we started Pebble Hills, we give that school two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional funding for, for four years so they can get up to speed with respect to the co-curricular. That, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. That funding.
Different slide.
Difference has ended this year. There, they've got a, so that's why you see a little bit of a, of a difference there as well in the co-curricular. Also, I wanna remind the board that we make estimates with respect to student travel. Now, we've been very successful and I certainly wanna commend Mrs. Macias and our coaches because we got a lot of teams right now that are on the play, that are in the playoffs. And we're grateful for that and we're, we're, we're hoping that they win. But we budget a certain amount because sometimes they may not make it. This year, we're, we're putting more money in there because we got more teams qualifying, so we're budgeting more. So what we try to do is, is strike a balance with respect to the original budget. We don't wanna overbudget, but we wanna be commensurate. And as our teams become more successful, then perhaps in the future, we might add to the student travel account, so to speak.
As you're trending there, is that the trend?
And right now, it's trending that way. Right now, I mean, you'll see, uh, on Tuesday, that we have a three hundred thousand dollar increase in our student travel budget because they're, they're successful. And so, so again, we wanna strike a balance where we don't inflate the balance too much and, and see how that goes, so to speak.
On the next page, on page twenty-two, uh, it's always been a concern of mine anyway. Um, on sixty-three hundred, supplies and materials. And again, ten percent decrease, uh, drives me crazy when teachers call and we're out of copy paper or we're out of these supplies or those supplies. And help, please help me understand that we're a bigger school district than before, but, but we're budgeting less for supplies. Are they coming from somewhere else or?
So in the, in the June workshop, Mr. Ayub, what we try to do is present you a scenario of supplies. It's been a question that's come up and so we'll show you, uh, where we are. I wanna remind that, that, that we have about one point five million dollars in, in classroom furniture. And that's embedded in that supply account this year. One point five million dollars that we're doing for, for schools. Now, we're gonna go up and add another five hundred thousand dollars in supplies. So some of that is because that amount that's in the current year is not gonna, you know, it's not in next year's original budget. Whatever's not spent will get rolled over. And what you might find is that that sixty-three hundred account will get increased as we move over any unexpendited funds or any contracts over to the next year. That's one major reason. But what we can do is certainly, again, uh, provide you some more information with respect to the supply account, uh, in the June budget workshop.
And I probably should've asked this before, but the furniture expense is always kinda deceiving when we mix it into here. Uh, you know, what is being used for instructional supplies and then, and then furniture supplies, materials, equipment. Um, does the budgeting process allow us to break that off so that it would be obvious that this amount is for furniture, this amount is for supplies?
Yes, sir. I mean, so what we've done is like in the, in the April twenty-fifth budget, we've tried to kind of shown you the information in different ways. And so, I mean, in that particular book, we showed you within instruction, the different line items.
Okay.
And so what you'll see is certainly, um, an increase, uh, in there. And here, you're just, we're just giving you the total class object, total salaries, total contracted service, total, um, supplies. But, um, what we'll try to do is provide you in two different workbooks, different scenarios so that you can kinda see the, the budget in, in different ways.
Obviously, what's most important to us is what happens in the classroom. And I'm not suggesting that we shortchange that in any way. It's just if, if we, I was wondering what we were buying there.
Yeah, so, and Susan Olson kinda gave you some information.
Okay.
Just kinda showing the spotlight we're looking at there. So what, what you have in the, in the work and the books that we provided you, um, in the April twenty-fifth, and we can give you that book if you don't have it with you, and this current book, different scenarios so that we could provide as much detailed information for you so you can see where the increases are, uh, where they're not. Also, in the April twenty-fifth, we kinda gave you a difference between our proposed budget, uh, the current revised budget and the original budget. So you get an idea of some of the changes there. What you have here, the differences in this budget as opposed to the April twenty-fifth is a salary increase, the lease, and maybe some amounts, some additional amounts in certain areas. Other than that, it should be the same.
Um, so, and, and I probably just gave that sheet away. The sixty-four hundred, other operating expenses, conversely, that's a growth of twenty, almost, well, twenty and a half percent. Um, what's covered in those areas?
So what you have there is certainly you have, um, uh, we have miscellaneous operating expenses, we have travel, you know, um, let me, let me kinda go over with you real quick.
You have student travel or staff travel?
We have stu-, both. We have employee travel, we have student travel, uh, we have transportation expenses. What you'll find is that we budget within the schools and athletics and fine arts, transportation for whenever they're using the buses in town. And what we do is we have to budget and reward, or I should say reimburse, the transportation department whenever we do those charges. That's a major line item that's within that particular area, so to speak.
So does that include fuel? Cause we have another item in another page.
So, so fuel is under, is under sixty-three hundred.
So, so this doesn't cover that?
No, sir. But it includes certainly the chargebacks. And that's what we call them. So the schools all budget for chargeback for field trips, for athletics, for fine arts, not out-of-town travel, but certainly that field trip. And those get, uh, budgeted. And then as we charge them off, we charge the school and then we credit the transportation department. And so what it allows is the transportation department, it kinda helps the transportation of our budget to, I mean, to increase their budget because it, it's a credit, so it reduces their expenses. And they can bump up their budget for additional fuel, additional overtime, or in this case, this year, buses. So, I mean, that's something that we do from, from year to year. And so, you, you know, on the April twenty-fifth, I mean, we can kinda show you what's in the, within sixty-four hundred.
I'm getting close. I'm almost done.
No, no, it's okay.
Uh, on, uh, page twenty-four, um, sixty-two, twenty-two. I was just wondering, what, what is that?
I'm sorry, which one?
Sixty-two, twenty-two on page twenty-four, student tuition and public school, I believe?
Yeah, I believe that has to do with, is that the, um.
Cause that apparently is almost non-existent. I guess we're not gonna use that anymore?
So I, I mean, you're looking at the eight thousand dollars and then we have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the student tuition.
Yeah, this last year was one thirty-five and we're, you're projecting eight thousand.
Yes. And I believe that has to do with the tuition that we pay for our employees that go to community college or to go to UTEP to be able to get certified.
Sixty-two, twenty-two, ma'am?
So is the sixty-two, uh, twen-, sixty-two, twenty-two, if I'm not mistaken. So my understanding, I believe that's the, the tuition that we budget for, for our employees.
The sixty-two, twenty-two is for the regional day, for the regional day school program for the deaf, the RDSPD.
Okay.
And the sixty-two, twenty-one is the, the.
Okay. My apologies.
So, so that's going away?
No, sorry. What happens is that we get the, the, the invoice from, um, from the regional day, from special ed, right at that point in time. Um, we'll be looking at that.
The regional day school program for the deaf and I, and, and I can speak on, on that one. It's the, the state developed a regional day school program for the deaf regionally to address the needs of students because their communication skills need to be enhanced by other students who are using sign language. Here, the regional day school program for the deaf is housed under EPISD. So that's where the students go. Therefore, the students that are housed through the RDSPD, essentially each district pays a portion of that tuition.
Why would it be so much lower though?
Pardon me?
But why would it be so much lower?
If not as many students are enrolled there. It all depends on how many students are enrolled.
Some, some are two, some are five, and it's expensive. And so it varies.
But that makes sense. Um, page twenty-five, Mr. Ressa. Um, is our fuel cost not trending up? I mean, we, we had a nice year of low fuel, but.
Yes, sir. It, it is trending up. And, and, but, but, but as I mentioned before, with the chargebacks that come in from the additional field trips that are charged to the schools, then what happens is the transportation department is, is able to increase their budget based on the chargebacks that we get. So kinda like, in other words, kinda like with respect to the, the student, uh, yeah, co-curricular field trips for the students. We wanna budget a certain amount that's not too high or too low. But as the schools are charged for these field trips, kinda like we charge the school and we credit the, the transportation's department's budget. And so as it, as those field trips continue, their budget is able to be increased for fuel to cover those field trips. So I know it looks a little bit lower because you're right, we are trending higher. And, and, but we wanna start with somewhere where we, we don't wanna budget too much. And we realize that the additional field trips that come in, the, the, the transportation department gets a credit. And what we do is at, at a certain point throughout the year, we might increase the fuel based on these credits from the chargebacks that they might get. So I hope that.
One more question and then I'll save the other questions when we get to compensation. I have questions then. Um, and I called you on this and just for, um, clarity, on page thirty-three, sixty-one, thirty-eight and sixty-one, thirty-nine, um, and you and I spoke on the phone. Uh, so, so that, that money that we allocate there, that's for shoes, uh, non-skid shoes for our CNS workers. And then, um, the employee allowance, that's to cover between campus travel and those types of things?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I, I went in and kinda cleared and got that information from Ms. Shonovski.
We don't have more employees, the uniforms, I mean, the shoe thing didn't change? Thirty-five covers it pretty well?
Yes, sir. I mean.
A lot of, oh, they have to request that. Is there reimbursement? All right. I have some on compensation, but I'll address those when we get to that.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Uh, I think you asked questions on compensation or?
Were you gonna go over the, the last pages on this booklet or should I jump in?
We can certainly go over it. It kinda like mirrors, um, misinformation. So what you have in page thirty-eight of your booklet, uh, kinda mirrors, administration recommends a two percent increase off the calculated midpoint inclusive of the step. So, uh, what we're looking at is a one thousand five, fifty-eight dollar increase for employees that are paid off the teacher pay scale, starting teacher pay scale that being recommended entry level at forty-seven thousand, seven sixty-five for bachelors, fifty thousand, two sixty-five for masters and fifty-one thousand, seven sixty-five for doctorate. Uh, with respect to the counselors, you're looking at a four dollar counselor differential. So you're looking at a thousand fifty-eight for all counselors, including the differential. So you're looking at certainly, uh, entry level pay for counselors would be fifty-one thousand thirteen. And then for all other major paid families, you're looking at a two percent increase off the midpoint. That is our recommendation at this point in time. And I have here along with Mr. Campoya, if there's any questions on compensation.
Mr. Gander?
Straight.
Yeah, and I know I called and I don't know if you or Mr. Campoya can address this. One, one of the things that's obviously of, of clarity that I would like to get is, um, I had asked you if you would consider looking at some of our lowest paid full-time employees. I realize that, uh, minimum wage folks, some of them are temporary, some of them are even student workers. But, but of our folks that are here full-time that we have to provide, uh, benefits, insurance, uh, those employees that we may have in the eight eighty, eight, eight dollars and eighty cents category an hour, I was hoping, could you give me an idea how we compare on take-home pay based on our insurance and benefits? Cause I think that's important. Uh, you know, uh, where are we? I'm a very strong advocate that we need to pay our employees our fair salary. I, I don't ever want us to be at the bottom. I don't know if we're, we can be at the top, but certainly on the top percentile would be good. But, uh, so, so fairness and equity there is kind of important in my mind anyway. Do you have any information how that would lay out maybe now or in the coming year?
Yes, I think Mr. Campoya has prepared some information for the board that he can kinda move over.
So Mr. Ayub, what, what we did back then when we presented the increase to the health plan is we provided the board with the actual paychecks for the lowest paid employees. So, so when you called me earlier, what I did is I pulled the custodian pay scale for Socorro ISD, El Paso ISD and Isleta ISD. And, um, I don't know if the team can bring it up on the screen so that I can show you the difference. So what I ended up doing is for the pay grade, which is the lowest, so that one I went over right now. But this is the one that I wanted to explain to you. The, uh, this is only for custodians. So what I did is on our lowest pay grade, which is the four oh one, that includes crossguards that are grandfathered, cafeteria monitors that are grandfathered, craft helpers, custodians and lifeguards. So that our base pay, calculating the hourly rate times eight hours a day times two hundred and thirty-nine days, doing the same for El Paso ISD and for Isleta ISD, that gives you a paycheck amount if we were to pay twenty-four paychecks. In Socorro, we do Isleta, they pay twenty-six paychecks and El Paso pays twenty-four. So that, that is a difference. What I did on these is kept it at twenty-four paychecks so that we can compare apples to apples.
Okay.
Then what I did on the, um, base pay is I subtracted what an employee would get deducted for health benefits depending on the plan that they're on. And then I compared it with the other districts. Now, it does say net pay, but I wanna clarify, that's only subtracting the health benefits. Of course, employees are deducted TRS, TRC, um, any other deductions, including income tax and Medicare. So for example, for Socorro ISD, which is the first group, base pay for a custodian would be seven oh one, oh seven, twice a month. So this is showing one paycheck. The first two shows the base and the premier for employee only. So the blue across the board is employee only. So we increased our amount because remember it was zero. So I'm using next school year. So that's twenty dollars a month, semi-monthly it's ten. So on the first one, the base, the employee would end up getting six ninety-one, oh seven.
That's his paycheck.
That's his paycheck. Of course, not counting any other deductions. If the employee was on the premier plan, their take-home pay would be six sixty-one, oh seven. Okay? Then if you move to the second one, you see E and S, that is employee and spouse. So the same scenario, the base pay is a hundred and fifty, which is three hundred a month. And then for the premier is two twenty-seven and you have the net pay. Then the E and C, which is light green, that is employee and children. So you have the same amount and it gives you the net. And then the last one is E and F, that is employee and family. So if you compare the net pay for, let's say the blue, with El Paso ISD, you'll notice that as it is, El Paso ISD is paying more to custodians than we are. So if the employee is the only one covered and they are on the TRS select plan, they're making slightly more than our employees after take-home pay, seven eighty-five. And if they're on the TRS two. And if they're on the TRS two, which covers them a little more comparable to our premier plan, they take home seven fifteen. The eye-opener is when the employee has employee and spouse, employee and children, or employee and family. You will notice that on all those, we de, we beat them significantly because of our health benefit plan. And even though El Paso ISD pays the custodian more. Isleta ISD, the same thing. The only thing with Isleta, they have four different plans. And, um, the comparable plan to our base plan is Plan Four, and then the comparable plan to the premier plan, and we still beat them on the premier plan, is Plan One. So if you notice on Isleta, we still beat them even if it's the employee coverage only. But then if you go down to the employee and spouse, on ours, the employee premier plan, they would take home four seventy-three, and Isleta, the employee would take home three twenty-six. So you can see that we're still above them when they include employee spouse, employee and children, or employee and family.
Thank you. That was my question, so you, so you've answered it. Um, so, I, I, and I don't know if you or, or, or Mr. Ressa, is there a word on the street what the other school districts are going to do? I, I don't necessarily want to fall behind the other school districts. I don't want to get into a salary race, but I don't want to fall behind, you know?
Yes, TSB submitted, uh, or sent all HR departments in the state of Texas a survey. So we participated in the survey, and of course, the survey is submitted around the last letter part of March, beginning of April. So a lot of districts are just submitting what they intend to, to submit to the board for approval. And the trend is one point five, and it goes to two percent. I didn't see any district submitting more than two percent at this point.
Yes.
Remind me one or two districts that I looked at.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, that's just through the word of mouth, as a rumor from the rumor.
Okay.
Two to three percent on, on one of the districts.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gander. Thank, a lot of work. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gander. Any more questions? Mr. Nakada?
Mr. Campoya, how many of our, I certainly appreciate all the additional details, but how realistic is it to put the employee and spouse, employee, children, and employee and family up there? You know, if I'm making seven hundred bucks every two weeks, I don't think I'm going to cover my spouse, my children, or my family. I don't think I'm making enough.
You will be surprised, but I can run that report and show you. We do have, not a lot, but we do have employees that go that route to cover their, their spouse and children. But I can provide that and, to, to you all if you want me to.
Okay. And I think the point I'm trying to make really is that, you know, if, if, if it truly is a surprise, as you say, I would say it's in instances where, you know, I, I, I need to find, uh, need to, uh, find myself someone who has hit the lottery, so that, you know, I can only work for insurance, you know, and cover the whole family, because then it, it really doesn't matter, you know? And of course, I know we're not going to dig that deep into people's lives, uh, we shouldn't. But, you know, I think the comparison that we really have to pay attention to, though, is, is what appears to me to be the light blue, the first comparison. And if we look strictly at that, I mean, we are behind, and I think that's the reality. Uh, hopefully, the numbers would show that, but I really think, you know, at that pace, pay rate, that's the reality that we're looking at.
And, and if I recall, um, we have the majority on the light blue, then the next one that follows is the light green, and then the pink, and then the family is the last one. So the least of our employees have the family.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So, just, so, just want to say that, uh, with respect to the budget process, on Tuesday, we will request your approval for compensation, uh, through the regular agenda. We'll have a budget workshop, um, let me see if I can go this way. Uh, I think that first week in, in, in June, and we'll give you the budget as it stands, and we're going to ask you to approve at the regular board meeting in June. We'll have the public hearing to discuss the tax rate being proposed, as well as the budgets. We'll also ask you to approve the three budgets that we've talked about, uh, and then we'll provide you a tax impact. So, if there's no questions, I want to thank you for being here. We do appreciate your time. And feel free, and we'll try to get you that information, Mr. Nakada, for, for Tuesday's board meeting.
I st, um, I'm sorry, I still have questions.
Mr. Nakada, go ahead.
Mr. Ressa, when, um, I mean, I understand that certainly, as you can imagine, because of the industry I'm in, um, that we're all, you know, sitting at the edge of our seats to see what the legislature does as far as, uh, funding, well, um, the ACA, and what's going to happen there, whether it's going to be repealed, and what the consequences are of that. But, um, I haven't done the research myself. Um, at what point do we make a decision? I mean, we can't sit here and wait, and wait, and wait, and have that fear of possibly losing that three point eight million dollars. You know, that could happen. We saw it fail once already. Um, you know, the news has reported that although it's passed the House, it's, you know, not likely going to pass the Senate, so, I mean, we can't sit, uh, and with that fear of three point eight, where, where, where do you think that we just decide this is what we're going to do? Or, or when does the risk of losing that funding, is it no longer real, because it's not going to affect this year, it'll affect next year? Is that October one?
Uh, well, I would think that certainly October one of maybe the next fiscal year would be something we ought to consider, the fiscal year for the federal side.
Right.
Because I do think that, as what I understand about the new healthcare laws, that reduction's going to be over a ten-year period. I think there's going to be plenty of time for there to be discussion on the Senate side, because the Senate still has to review that. There's already a lot of discussion on that particular piece of the, of that, of that healthcare. So at this point, we're going to be looking closely at it, Mr. Nakada. I do think that we're safe for this fiscal year. That's my feeling. But if there are changes, I'm hopeful that it won't be significant decreases, it'll be gradual increases, and hopefully, at that time, we can certainly adjust to the, protect your, uh, uh, whatever information that we get at that time. But I do think that, that personally, that we'll be okay for this year, and we'll be looking at it closely to see if there's any impact. And if so, whether that negative impact, if it does come to that, and how it'd be implemented over, is it going to be over a two- to five-year period? Is it going to be all at once? So I think it gives us a time to be able to adjust to our budget and see how we can react to that particular action from the, from the feds. I hope that answers your question. Okay.
Any more questions?
I'm good.
All right.
Nothing more on this agenda. This workshop is over at six thirty-three.